They've devoted a significant part of their lives to serve their cities and I just want to say that I appreciate them very, very much. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. And we will begin with the roll call.
Councilor Long here. Councilor Coles.
Here.
Councilor Hires.
Here.
Councilor Ratliff.
Here.
We have a call.
Our indication tonight will be presented by Ed Blanchard from Zoe Institute.
I feel like you guys should be praying for me. I run the day center, so. Father, we thank you so much for this time that we can gather here and talk about our city of Talapaw. Lord, I thank you that you would lead the speech, that you would bless each one of the members here, and that you would lead us and guide us in how we're to go forward in the upcoming days. Lord, I thank you that you have your hand of blessing over each person, each representative here, and that you would bless them in their home, bless them in their finances, bless them as they come, and bless them as they go. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due diligence for all.
Item number two, public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time, and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talapaw citizens. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we will, we have several people who are, are we going to consent agenda first? Okay. Item number three is the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved in one motion. Any items proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Items included are to approve the minutes of the April 1st, 2019, and April 15, 2019 city council meetings, to acknowledge receipt of the financial reports from March 2019, to appoint Jeremy Dry as volunteer firefighter in the fire department, to appoint Edgar Acotaras Rosales as volunteer firefighter in the fire department, and I apologize if I just stumbled all over that, to accept the self-termination from Macy Baker as part-time labor effective April 15, 2019, to accept the resignation from Dallas Hunt as a dispatcher in the police department effective April 29, 2019, to accept a utility easement from Heidi Pitchlin to the city of Talapaw.
Mayor, I'd like to pull the utility easement.
We will pull the utility easement. Are there any other items that we would like to change?
Also, we didn't approve February financials, so we probably need to pull that one.
I don't think, I was gonna say, I don't know that we have to. We're not approving any financials here. We're accepting that we received them. So we accept that we received the March financials. I mean, obviously, it's unorthodox and out of calendar year line, but we received the March, and the next month we'll receive February, April, May. I'm just saying, if you want to.
I mean, if somebody asks to pull it, you gotta pull it in discussions afterwards. You're already out of consent now.
All right. So we will pull those two items from the consent agenda. We have some announcements, presentations, and reports.
I make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Coles?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number four, announcements, presentations, and reports. We have this first item, the presentation and introduction of new mayor and council. Stephen, were you going to do this?
Sure. So I guess it's false to me, the introduction. We've all met Mayor Katrin. She's welcome to the council, and welcome to this side of the podium. And then we also know Councilor Ratliff for Ward Four. So if you don't know them, I'm sure they're happy to get to know you, and I think they'll do a good service to the city moving forward. Welcome to the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Stephen. We have a recognition for years of service for employees. We're Sean Keys, who's five years with the street department. Is Mr. Keys here? We're congratulating him for his number of years. Is there a report from the library? Moving on, is there a report in the Chamber of Commerce? Report from Talapaw Main Street Association, Jamie Hammond. We've got a written report on that one. Reports from city departments. The street department has a written report. Mr. Riles, do you have anything to add to that?
No, ma'am. Everything's done before.
And the police department, Chief King?
I'll simply rely on the weak listen offices.
Okay. So Meritorious Service Award presentation to Matt Fritz.
Unless the council and mayor disprove, I will stand there and face the crowd if that's okay. On the afternoon of April 20th at about 3:00, Officer Matt Fritz made a traffic stop, what he thought was going to be a routine stop. No seatbelt, at First Street and the bypass. He made contact with the driver. Some of you may have seen it on YouTube. It's got about 40,000 hits so far that it's been watched.
Fifty-two now.
Fifty-two thousand hits now. He made contact with the driver, and the traffic stop quickly turned to something that wasn't quite as routine. The driver refused to give his license, refused to give his name, refused to give his insurance, told Officer Fritz multiple times that he didn't have a right to stop him, that he was just in transport, and he didn't have a right to stop him. He was what we call a sovereign citizen, or trying to be one. Traffic stop lasted a little over 30 minutes. We ended up calling the Talapaw Fire Department to help gain entry into the vehicle. Officer Fritz had the window broken out, removed the driver, handcuffed him, did something that, I won't lie to you folks, I probably wouldn't have done if it was me on the traffic stop. But he remained calm, he remained patient, he remained compassionate through the entire stop, because the man he stopped was pretty frustrating, was hard to deal with. And so tonight, we're presenting Officer Matt Fritz with the Police Meritorious Service Medal, tonight, for his poise, his patience, and his professionalism in a pretty tense situation, in a frustrating situation. Something the video doesn't show was after the traffic stop, after Mr. Rowe was placed into custody, a pistol was found in the center console. Thirty minutes of talking to this guy through a window crack that much, never raised his voice one time in 30 minutes, of a guy telling him, "No, no, I won't tell you my name. No, I won't give you my license." And a lot of the time, just ignoring him. So I think Matt deserves a round of applause tonight and some recognition. He'll also be outside, and he said $5 apiece to try to arm this guy. He's not as strong as he looks, I promise. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
So item number five, discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent The first item removed was the utility easement.
I'd just like to know about it.
Mr. Johnson.
Got a map. Let's know a little more about it. It's for the Woodridge addition. They platted several months back. Correct. It's near Wheeler. It's on Kim Street. Ran into an issue of elevation when it comes to the sewer, and so they had to find an additional route. And so Ms. Pitchlin allowed them to cross her property with the sewer line.
And where is her property?
See, it's top left corner. We see the, we're approving. You guys see that?
Motion to approve.
Thanks, sir.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilor Dowers Coles and seconded by Ray Long. Councilor Coles?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the second item that was removed was the acknowledgement of receipt of financial reports from March 2019.
If all that's, just, I think we needed to bring that out, that February wasn't approved, but if it were received.
It was received. You all just didn't vote to accept.
Is there further discussion?
I make a motion to receive the financial report for March.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Hires has made a motion to receive the financial report for March, seconded by Councilor Long. Roll call, please. Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Coles?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Because we have several people from out of town, if you'll indulge us, we're going to go ahead and pull item number 21 to the forefront here, so that those guests may travel along safely. Item number 21 is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1284-2019, approving a special use permit application submitted by CRB Companies LLC on behalf of AT&amp;T for the construction of a 150-foot monopole cell tower located at 996 South College Avenue. Mr. Johnson, Director of Planning and Development, will take this. This is a discussion only item today. This is the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So our friends from CRB, who's the contractor with AT&amp;T, brought some additional info this evening with them that I think you might find valuable. So this is a cell tower that's been in the works for a number of years, three to four years, I believe. When AT&amp;T first approached the city of Talapaw to place a tower here, they had some issues with some other tower locations and went back to the drawing board. And so they've submitted just one application with us. This gives you, this is the general vicinity of where this is, 996 South College. It's southwest of the Cherokee County 911 Center. Most of us are familiar with that, near the Health Department and the Cherokee County Community Building. It's gonna be located on AT&amp;T's property. One of the issues that we have is the setback and separation distances. They don't meet them to the code, but the code does allow adjustments to those distances. And planning and zoning recommended approval, two weeks ago, with the caveat that they bring in new information from a licensed surveyor, which they did, that gives us the exact distances to adjacent property boundaries and some homes on State to the west. So some of the distances that we're talking about is 150-foot monopole tower, and the code requires a three-time separation distance from residential occupied structures. And so that puts it at 450 feet. According to their survey, the nearest home due west on State is 445, so it's five feet short of that three times the tower height separation distance. Other distances are known as setback distances, and from any adjacent property line, it should be 75% of the tower height, because that is 112 and a half feet. And so you can see on this map, this is just me giving you something off of Google Earth. But according to their survey, from their licensed surveyor, there are actually 106 from the east boundary, 107 from the southern boundary, and 81 from the northern boundary. And so they're still gonna require a variance, if you will, of that 75% setback distance. I'll remind you, it is 75% of the tower height. It's not 100% of the tower height. So if you follow the letter of the code, it could still fall and contact one of those adjacent structures. The biggest purpose for the tower, according to AT&amp;T, is coverage. And they provided you a coverage map tonight. It's the one with the red blotches with green. Councilor Long's looking at it right now. What page is that on?
It does not have a page number, but it is very red and very orange.
The top image is the existing coverage, and the bottom image is the coverage with the new tower. Additionally, there is an agreement, arrangement that's, go ahead.
Coverage for what?
Cell service. Signal coverage.
But that.
Signal strength.
Portion of town already has cell service.
What they're telling you is it's weak coverage, so you might have one bar in that location instead of five bars. That's what they're trying to tell you. Additionally, there is an agreement and arrangement with Cherokee County 911 to place some of their antenna equipment on this tower for free. I don't know the details of that arrangement. I know they've made the same offer to the city, but after speaking with Chief Hammons, and I know that, Chief King, he, I don't know what your arrangement is with Cherokee County 911, if you would need tower equipment on there, you would have to talk about that. But I know Chief Hammons doesn't need the tower at this point, so I know that was out there. What else is there to say about the tower? Do you have any other questions about it? It's pretty straightforward. The commercial properties to the east are gonna need a variance of that initial setback distance. It's gonna be 75%.
Similar to the tower that's behind the.
As far as a monopole constructed tower, that is the one next to Armory.
That's a monopole.
I'm not certain how tall that is. This one started out at 140, and after Cherokee County 911 gave their engineers the specs for their antenna equipment, it required the height to be increased to 150.
CRB's the contractor.
I'd like to read Chief Hammons. Would you like to say something?
Mr. Johnson's correct. There's, there would be very little need, and I've learned recently that there is some need, but it is a third backup for our radio system. We have a antenna out by the city dump, and then we have our backup up on the water tower on, I believe it's Moxon. But this would serve as a third backup if the catastrophic happened. So for my department, the positive of it is that it's going to be a FirstNet tower. But as far as use for our department, we won't be using it except for the third backup. It will, however, tremendously assist the rural departments out in the round area of Talapaw that do mutual aid with our department.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
We, the contractor, Ty is here with us. I'm sure he'd like to say something about it.
Thank you for having me, everyone. My name's Ty, and as Clinton said, I'm with CRB Companies, and we're representing AT&amp;T. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background of what we're doing here and what we're trying to accomplish by this. AT&amp;T has identified Talapaw not only as underserved for their customers, but also is a great candidate for the FirstNet program. Just to give you a little bit of update about the FirstNet program, what the federal government has decided is, is that they want our rural communities, smaller cities, towns, to basically have the same amount of services to all Oklahoma City, using that as an example, for IMSA, fire, rescue, basically anything emergency related. So what AT&amp;T has stepped up and said is, they would like to get a part of this and be a huge part of it, and essentially deploy towers that they're calling FirstNet towers. And what that's gonna do is give the FirstNet responders their own dedicated, basically spectrum, essentially. As of right now, let's just say we had a tornado or something come through Talapaw, what would happen is, is that the FirstNet that's in place now, that's the used by the fire department, et cetera, would take precedent over the calls, let's just say, from me and you, if we were in the neighborhood. So essentially, what you would wanna do is think about a cell phone tower as a living cell. So a living cell can, as calls come in, the cell expands, and it can only take so much. It will get to a capacity. Once you get to that capacity, those calls that are trying to get in or come through the cell will be dropped off. So essentially, if the fire department is consuming those in a catastrophic event, that would basically delay and/or cancel or drop calls from citizens, essentially. So what this FirstNet is going to do is provide its own spectrum, so there's never dropped calls as far as, if there's an event, the IMSA, fire, et cetera, can use that one spectrum off the FirstNet, particularly this tower in this area, and the citizens' calls would not be dropped after that. So just to give you a little bit of the background of how we got to where we're at, I started visiting with Marty Kimball there at the E911 for Cherokee County, and he was telling me that they could really use, you know, some help trying to get their signal and their radios out across the county, not just here in the city. And we did some research, and, you know, it's been a few years ago, AT&amp;T was looking to build a few towers, and they were taller, and I believe there was three or four of them in and around the city. And what this one's really gonna do is, again, we're gonna, look at your maps there, we're gonna position this tower over on AT&amp;T's property, which is surrounded by commercial property other than to the west where the houses are. And what AT&amp;T is willing to do is to work with Marty, like he said, and got his engineer to basically tell us exactly what equipment they would need to revamp their system as far as to be able to reach every corner of Cherokee County. And what AT&amp;T has decided, that if we can get this tower, this proposal through, that we'll take the E911, basically coax cable, I won't get too technical here, but take the coax and everything from their building, we'll pay for the expense of running it under the highway and run it directly to our tower, therefore making the 911 service seamless as far as no drops, no dropped calls, they'll be able to spread out, get all Cherokee County. So that is essentially the goal. And again, we started off at 130 or 140 is what AT&amp;T really needed to be able to cover what they're trying to do, and after Marty and I got together and got the engineers involved, it looks like 150 is really what they need to be able to obtain the coverage that they are looking for and find. So that's how we got to 150. And again, what we're doing here tonight is we're asking for the variance on the setbacks, just for the simple fact that on three sides, we do not meet those. So I'll be glad to answer any questions for you guys. I think I missed anything here? And on the coverage maps, I'll say this, one of your questions was about the coverage. So if you look at the existing coverage, you can see the white, the white spaces in the middle. Essentially, that's where is the weakest coverage, and a lot of that is due to Main Street, obviously, it's a ton of traffic from the college and not just from the city. And then if you look at the bottom, the solid red will definitely fill in those gaps. So really, we're reaching two goals there, is one, to help the FirstNet, and then two, to help the citizens and AT&amp;T customers.
So the FirstNet, even, will it, does it still work for Talapaw even if our police department has said they're not gonna use the pole, and our fire department has said they're not gonna use it, other than maybe the third option in a catastrophic event? Which if we're at the third option in a catastrophic event, probably not gonna be useful in our fire department for us either, because we're gonna all be somewhere else.
So to answer your question, yes. So FirstNet, again, at this time is really limited because of the technology, et cetera, and because there's, most of the towers don't have this technology as of now. So it's very limited. So again, so what the government, federal government is trying to do is push for this to be seamless, essentially. And what these towers and what these programs, this program is, because this is one of hundreds of towers that we're looking at building going into different communities. So that's, to answer your question, yes, it is available now, but at a very limited pace, and the new tower, new equipment will make it seamless.
If I may, Councilor Hires, one of the, the use by the city is not for the cell phone services, for radio antennas for communication. So it's that third backup there. I mean, the cell tower itself is there for cell phone services, just we have the availability to use it. We, more than likely, will take advantage of that if we can, as far as putting an antenna Thank you. The FirstNet's just for the cell service.
My understanding is the network, cell network won't get clogged up.
That's correct. And again, it's all about, you know, the IMSA, fire, sheriff being able to use it, and other calls not being pushed down, essentially, for them to use it on top, getting priority, which they should. So yeah, this will cure that.
Can we give one, take one? We have a cell tower on Main Street that.
On top of the AT&amp;T building? I understand.
Take it away, we'll give you the one.
Yeah, no, I get it. And to that point, if you'll look at a couple more maps, if you look at the distance to the nearest tower, what this application is called, it's on Google Earth, and we use it, it's called Tower Source. Essentially, you can see the grayed outside of the radius would be any tower within .5 miles, and that would be the top picture. So as you can see, there are no active towers within a half a mile of where we're trying to go. And if you drop down just a little bit, you'll even see the one-mile circle. And if you drop down just a little bit, you'll even see the one mile search radius. And that one in particular that you're talking about on Main Street, that is the only one that's even close, that's within the mile range. And in cellphone technology, cellphone tower a mile is like a hundred. It just, the technology hasn't got to where we can be spread out for miles and be able to provide the coverage that we're still gonna provide. Yes, sir.
Also, I spoke with this gentleman today and one of the questions I asked him was, is there gonna be space on the tower if the city needed to use and have space available for them? And he assured me that there would be space for the city in the event that we needed the spot on the tower. So that was one of the guarantees that I liked.
Yep, and I can talk a little bit to that. What we'll do, you know, I know one of the concerns with municipalities is, hey, look, we don't want fifty towers on our Main Street, forget it, you know, because of the site and skyline, et cetera. In this particular case, what we're gonna do, we're gonna engineer this tower to hold at least three other carriers. So to the chief's point, you know, if Sprint or Verizon or whoever comes in and says, hey, we'd love to get in into the middle of Talapaul, because as you can see in those maps, there are no towers here. What they would do, they would go to this tower owner and say, hey, we'd like to get there, therefore saving another tower having to be back in there trying to get approved or building, you know, on Main Street. So definitely a huge advantage there to the way we're gonna engineer it, for sure.
Are there further questions or comments?
I just have one elementary question. If the unforeseen ever did happen, who's on the hook on the insurance side?
AT&amp;T provides a coverage of any kind of liability for the life of the tower, absolutely.
I just wanted to say one thing that the city may not know unless you've read the emergency operations plan for the city and the county. For the emergency operations center, the ELC, we at Emergency Management, we depend on nine-one-one as our backup center. That's where we would move if by chance our area was destroyed or to the point where we needed to move, but carry on operations. So Marty and I have been talking for four or five years to try to get this passed through and it's never gotten to this point. So we're excited about it, of course, that's why we're here. But I just wanted to throw that out there. Now, when I say emergency operations center, I mean all emergency services will be able to come in and house inside the nine-one-one center to carry on operations during a disaster. Just wanted to say that.
And if we could have just a couple of minutes, I know you've got a lot of items, I'd love to have Marty from the E-nine-one-one center just tell you a little bit about what he's in.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wondered if the whole total installation is a hundred and fifty feet or is the tower just a hundred and fifty feet and then you have a pad that holds it that is more big?
No, it will be a total of one fifty, yes ma'am. Yep. Can I have Marty, Tim?
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate you guys having me tonight. If you don't know me, my name's Marty Kimball, I've been the nine-one-one coordinator since 2010. And we are a city and county nine-one-one coordinator. So we dispatch for police, fire, EMS for the city and county, with exception of the police department, if it's a police only call, then we route it to the police department down there. The backup part that they're talking about is, and I think Chief Hammond's had just moved to another tower, so he's still got an old tower site that he could possibly go back to. But we are the backup for them and we have, we can talk directly in the case of a repeater went down on the radio side, not the cellphone side, but the radio side. If they allow us to have this top space that they're promising us, which is a coveted spot on a tower's, the top space, so we can have that elevation, it will fix a lot of problems for us. We have a lot of problems with rural fire and if you don't know, then I'm also the fire chief out at Gideon and we respond in Talapaul quite a bit with, to help the backup, you know. So we serve the city as well and I want you to know that the nine-one-one can serve the city. So the backup that we're talking about is for radio communications in the event that a repeater from one of the licensed sites goes down, and it has, and they do, and then we can talk directly truck to truck or car to car, basically from the nine-one-one center, two of those agencies out. And we'll cover, we'll cover every bit of the city as far as that's concerned. And then outside in the county, there obviously, there are going to be places down in like Illinois River Hall or the valleys and stuff that we may not quite hit. But we're currently having several issues down there now with radio communications to some of the rural line areas where like, the other day, we had a thirteen-year-old missing down at Cooks and, at Cooks Fire Department. And they were out looking, searching along with the sheriff's office, Cherokee County Sheriff's Office, and they were looking for this kid and we couldn't hardly understand them because it was such a distance. If we can get that direct line of communications with that elevation from our center, which is right here in the center of Talapaul, then it would greatly improve our communications with them. The second part of that is the First Net. Well, we were talking about the First Net side and stuff and that is something we are, you're currently, your fire department's running on these First Net cell phones where they're getting into several of the fire departments around and I know that Nate Keen, we're talking to Chief Keen, that they are looking into getting on the First Net phones. And basically, that's just a cellphone like I've got here, this is a iPhone XR and it's a First Net service. So it has preemption and priority, meaning that if something happened, God forbid, a seven thirty-seven, one of those ones having trouble right now, lands in the middle of Talapaul, everybody's gonna be on their phones and texts and stuff and it's gonna shut down the system. What happens is it overloads, it happens a lot. Population in the county and the city is growing tremendously with the addition of the casino and then what Cherokee Nation's doing out there, promising thirty-five hundred new jobs. You know, we gotta look to the future is what we gotta look to. And that will let us get out when nobody else can. And it's working now. I was in New Harbor, Maryland, just recently, and I was able to use the push-talk function on this phone and talk directly back to Assistant Chief Baker from there. And that's the kind of things that we're looking at with the First Net capabilities. If we don't have that First Net coverage, then it's gonna, it's gonna hinder those future programs that we're looking forward to. So I'll answer your question that you may have too.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions. Plant probably is, so has there been a landscaping plan as far as this goes? I mean, I think it only has to happen on the residential side, which is the backside. Is there any talk about adding it to the north side? But I know that you're looking at, and I'm making, I don't know that it is really the north side, but the side of the base is the community building. I mean, granted, it's a commercial space on three sides like the gentleman said, but that's also Talapaul, Cherokee County's community building.
Right.
Probably one of the most used buildings in this town, if not the most used building in this town. And so there's a little bit of an offset there potentially with landscaping to cover the base.
I will defer to Ty on what they're gonna do with that, if they're gonna do the privacy fence thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Typically, typically we'll have a very secure fence, just a security fence. According to the ordinance in the city of Talapaul, it does not require any buffering and so that's, that's why that we didn't put any in there. You know, typically, if municipality, you know, wants that ahead of time, it will be in ordinance and we can put it in our plans, which you guys have a part of that, so. So that's why there's nothing showing.
And then my only other question is, Mr. Kimball said if they allow us, and so I was just wondering, is there any type of contract that we have with them or will we have a contract with them that, that way we can take that if they allow us and say when they allow us to have that top spot?
Again, I'd have to defer to Mr. Kimball on that one. I'm not familiar with contracts.
Short notice though, we do not have a contract with, but it's all in all of the engineering and design plans, so I don't foresee them not. There will be, there will, to answer your question, there will be a contract. We haven't obviously signed it yet. We haven't done anything like that because obviously we wanna get approved first. But to answer your question, yes, there's definitely security there for the nine-one-one to absolutely understand, you know, the length and the time, when and all of that, absolutely.
I just, and I know that maybe we're two steps ahead of where we need to be, I get that. And I, you may, and I'm not faulting your intentions, gentlemen, whatsoever, but I think we've been presented numerous times with plans that when actually shovel starts hitting the ground, those plans seem to change a little bit.
Well, to your point, I think we approved the Verizon Tower, Antis Brennan, almost two years ago and they're just now beginning construction, so. There might be a lot of time between approval here and when AT&amp;T actually begins construction. But this is discussion only tonight.
Well, I, the mayor and I had a meeting last week with Hamid Vadafor from Lake Regent and Dr. Lee from the SUV. And so based a lot on our conversation, I think that, you know, the stuff that's running below the ground, the stuff, the towers are kind of the way that it's gonna be, just because the cost of running anything, you know, is far more than AT&amp;T really wants to invest in, is what I've picked up on. So everything, you know, I'm just saying from now on, it looks like everything's, you know, everything's gonna be in the air, so.
Are there any other questions? Not this, John?
What I would like to see, since it's rather a complex issue, I don't know whether the fire chief and the emergency purpose was invited there, but I think for the, to the council, we're totally informed that they should be there, you know, give us your professional opinion in writing, so when you meet and discuss the issue, you'll have a real clear idea of the benefits to our community. You know, we'd have the police chief saying, this is the benefit for this, this and this, and the fire chief and the emergency management. That way, I think you make a more informed decision process because you have written verification, even though they've given you testimony to what the effects would be, but this could be documented, good taste in ten of what you're trying to accomplish to benefit the community.
Thank you very much. This was an item for discussion only. It will come for action at a later date. So we will return to our regularly scheduled session. So item number six, discussion and possible action to appeal the decision of the animal control officer to ban a vicious dog. Mr. Johnson?
That's what I thought we were gonna start, was talking about. Wasn't really looking forward to it. These aren't things that we like to deal with, but we must, it's our job. So we'll just start with the ordinance. So this is part four, chapter one, section four, one twenty-five. And it says that it will be illegal to maintain or harbor a vicious dog in the city of Talapaul. It was passed back in eighty-six. So I want to go to definitions. The definition of a vicious dog in our code is a dog which is bitten or attempted to bite and person, a person without undue provocation, or which attacks, barks or growls at and acts as if it intends to attack or bite a person or persons, or which has killed or mauled another dog. And so the situation we had is another dog. So on April sixth, Biggie Crane, our compliance officer, responding to a call of a dog fight, I guess you can say, where Mr. Dibbler, the owner of the Gracie, who has been banned, pictured on the left, the dog has had escaped from its house. It typically doesn't come outside, it's not a fenced yard. And so I think according to him, a kid opened the door, the dog jetted out, went straight over to the neighbors who had, I believe, Tammy, the pug, on a leash or a chain in the front yard. And so Mr. Dibbler's dog bit the pug and we took Mr. Dibbler's dog, impounded it, quarantined it, and unfortunately, we informed him that it would be banned from the city. When we informed him, we also informed him of his right to appeal our decision to this body. And so that's essentially what we're, we're here to decide today. I believe Mr. Dibbler's here, I'm not a hundred percent sure. He can tell you more about it, I'm sure.
I built a wall to keep her in this time. My little boy, he's like nine, he opened up the gate, the screen door, and she took off. And I found out when I went up there to break him up, there was other dogs in like a, kind of like a little pen, she might have heard bark. And she's kind of like a mother type deal. And I think she went over to protect it and then thought the other dog was, I'm not really sure, 'cause I wasn't there. Me and the lady, well, I don't speak Spanish, 'cause I, so I can't talk to her in English right now. My niece, she's lived there and she knows a few people. And she went to go talk to the lady and we agreed that we'd pay, you know, have her pay the vet fee and bill and all that stuff. And, you know, she's all cool with me keeping my dog. I got a letter here. And we got a rabies shot. And I built a, like a, a screening porch type deal, the bottom of it's like wood all the way around to keep her out, keep her in, which has been working so far. But I think we'll, I know she's at her friend's house, so. And I think kinda, she's kinda like a turkey dog for me. And I had a letter from my doctor too. And she's kinda, you know, she's like, she, she's with me too far, she don't like to eat. She's been eating so far, but, and she kinda makes me go outside. I have depression, anxiety and, and so she, if it weren't for her, I'd be staying in my room like I have been. I don't work, I have problems with the public and stuff, you know, due to PTSD and anxiety and depression. Other than, she's usually a good dog, she's real gentle with my kids. My youngest one, she sleeps with me. But he's, you know, when he comes over for the weekend or whatever, he's been having a hard time sleeping 'cause the dog usually sleeps with him. And I, I guess, kind of a freak accident or something, I, you know, but I can promise it won't happen again. If you need all this stuff.
Counselors, do you have questions?
Can you bring those rabies shots? Is the stuff we have in our package is out of date?
Stuff right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just to clarify, when the dog escaped, the front door was open and the dog ran out of the front door?
Yeah.
And then now, the picture that we're looking at is the new enclosure you've built around the deck?
Right.
And you rent this mobile home, correct?
Yes. I had a fence at one time, that maybe taken down 'cause it was not chain link.
Okay.
So you brought the dog's rabies shots current?
Yes.
Following this event?
Yeah, I did that a few days ago.
I have a question for Plant.
Yes, sir.
So i- is this just a standard motion? Like if the, if A happens, then that kicks in this process?
That's, that's all we can do. We don't take it lightly. This, I believe, is the fifth dog that we banned since I've been over animal control. You know, if it wasn't a dog and it was a little kid, is where our mind goes right off the bat. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, we don't use much discretion there. If a dog attacks another dog or a person, it's gone, we ban it. Our animal control officer, Larry Warhong, he's been bit already since he's been on the job, so.
Discreted from the charge list, too.
And that dog was banned.
Thank you.
Essentially, I think that's where my head goes, is this has happened and then if we were to kind of overrule that decision and then something else were to happen, though I know your intentions are true, that, you know, you say that you don't ever want it to happen again. But if it does, I mean, now we've got a new fence and that has a gate that it has a gate that a dog can run out if he, and then I guess that's where my head goes, is to, or when it's next time, you know, we overrule this decision, and the next time it's the next door neighbor's child rather than just the dog that they have on the.
I usually did the fence, I got, they usually shut the door, so when they go out, I'm usually in the living room with them to make sure she don't go out. I explain to my nine-year-old, of course, I'm the other one, that, you know, make sure she's back there with me in my room, or, you know, you go out real quick and shut it and make sure you shut the other gate. It's been doing this so far.
Did you ever get a hold of the PAWS program? I think Vicky gave you their information?
Rhonda?
Yeah, Rhonda.
I let messages, nobody comes.
You never? Time to time, they'll, they'll help a resident of Cherokee County out with fencing. You know, they'll build a fence, or they'll purchase a kennel. They supply our animal control officers with leashes and collars. She's busy, unfortunately, you didn't get a hold of her.
I think she came out to my house one time, and she gave me a leash and looked away and...
I think my concern is this, the, the fence that you built, it was what probably is twenty-four to thirty-six inches high, maybe?
Something like that.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just assuming, I mean, the dog could, could probably jump that fence, I would assume, if it were motivated to get to what was on the other side of the fence.
It's impossible. I'm in the process of screening it all, but...
Okay. And do you have a timeline on when that might be done?
Hopefully, it'll be this Monday. If I get someone to help me, like, you know, I like showing out there because I hate to, you know, fall off the ladder or something like that.
Right.
I'll say if I get someone to help me tomorrow. For the couple of days.
Clint, do you have any idea the probability that there would be funding available to help do a secondary supplemental fence? To be an extra there?
It's, it's a nonprofit organization, and they cover the entire county. I can't speak for Rhonda Morris, but they've done it. I know that, but timeframe, money, resource, I'm not sure.
From, from an insurance standpoint, I'm, I'm an insurance agent for a day, and just the sign, just the sign that says beware of dog, one is a concern, is a concern to us, because to me, and from, from my point of view, I look at that and it says to me that there's a vicious animal behind there. So, just from, from an underwriting standpoint, when I look at it, I don't even have to see behind what kind of dog it is, it just automatically tells me that we've got something to worry about. Now, I, and one thing that I'll ask you is, how long have you, how long have you lived there?
A couple of years, maybe.
So, did you, did you have the dog before you had the dog, before you moved in, or since you moved in?
Yeah, since I moved in. I've had her for about two years, because she, she used to run to my, my daughter-in-law and her husband, and they didn't really know how to handle the dog, and it kind of got treated unfairly. And so, I had to kind of nurse her back up.
Rescue, rescue.
So, she trusts me, and my, of course, my wife and the kids, and it's kind of...
So, but every time the dog has to go to the restroom, or go outside, go to, you have to put it on that leash and you have to walk it through the neighborhood to do that?
Usually, you know, yeah, I got, I also got a harness, too.
So, even, but my point is, even if, even if fancy, or whatever, what was it all?
Crazy, crazy.
Yeah. Well, the other, what was the pug?
Tammy.
Tammy. So, even if Tammy, if Tammy is not on a leash, or if there's another animal that's not on a leash in the neighborhood, and you're walking your dog, and that dog comes into contact with your dog on a leash, that automatically becomes a problem? Is that accurate?
I think it could be, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I do, my next-door neighbor, well, went over, they have the pits, she gets along with it fine. And usually, I'll take her out there, I, I walk her. Or my oldest son here walks her sometimes. But it takes, it's a two-handed job, just walking.
Thank you. Do we have other questions, or are we ready for motion?
Well, the, the only comment I have is, you know, we have the coven set up for safety. And I have a large pet, and I also have a six-year-old dog. And, you know, if my pet attacked another dog, or did something, you know, I, unfortunately, I would have to, you know, follow the code. With that said, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
Is there a second to the motion? Have a...
Who was the second? Chair.
I just want to interject and say, we understand and respect that you need an emotional support animal. I mean, I understand the value to those. I have a brother that's got an emotional support animal, they're of great value, and I understand that's very helpful to you with your condition, but maybe something a little cuddlier and happier and...
Did I tell you the picture?
Well, we've got lots of pictures.
Oh, no. Oh, my father?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Well, this is a... Not very... This is, this is her taking a treat out of my, out of my mouth. She did it to my nine-year-old kid. She's very Japanese, and she's real sweet. She's, you know, had a bad dog.
Is there further discussion? There is one. We have a motion to deny. Do we have a roll call? Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'm sorry, Mr. Dibbler. Item number seven, discussion and update on the City of Tallahassee 2017-18 compilation and audit. City Administrator, Ms. Chou.
Councillor Mayor, Councillors, Mayor, again. The city's audit, the compilation has been completed and it's been forwarded to our auditor, Mr. Mike Green. There was a little bit of a delay in that forwarding of, of the compilation audit, but I spoke with Mr. Green, and I'll let him speak to you. I believe that we can still meet our deadline, but there will be some challenges.
Mr. Green?
Good evening. Now, we've, uh, got the compilation today, so I'll just say that it looks really good. Barry did a good job on it, but to expect me to get it done in a month or the last three weeks, when it's taken ten months to get it, might be precedent. I'm going to do my armistice to get it done by the end of May, but there's a lot of work to be done in order to complete the audit. Any questions for me?
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Barry is here as well. If you'd like to hear from Barry. Mr. Spires?
Mr. Spires, do you have anything you'd like to?
No, I don't have anything to add to that. I will, you know, try to answer the questions you guys may have, if you've got any questions that I...
I do know that part of the delay is in getting the audit and financial reports from some of the component units.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, Mayor, I would love to find any kind of excuse for this, but, yeah, the city audit, or the hospital audit come in in January. Bottom line is, you know, you guys hired me, what, October, November of last year. You know, I had some family issues I had to take care of, and then we got into tax season. You know, it's just been kind of one thing after another. I'm not going to stand up here and make excuses. I'd love to see this job get done in September, but I have got my end done, you know, and so, I'll work with mine to do whatever we need to.
But we appreciate that you have finished the compilation.
I have finished it, thank goodness, you know, but like I say, you know, if you guys got any questions, I'm, I'm prepared to talk to anybody.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the list is discussion to hire a compilation and audit firm for the City of Tallahassee 2018-19 financials. And since you're still here, do you want to address that at all?
I'll be happy to handle that. However, this board sees fit, and this council sees fit. In the past, we've done it two different ways. We've gone out to bid, and we have hired with having just been out to three, three different firms, and kind of informal recommendation on my part.
My experience previously with a December due date on financials is that we would hire our compilation and auditors before the end of the fiscal year, and we typically hired them on a three-year contract pending or subject to finance availability. And so, if we could do something similar to that?
I would love that, and I know these, these gentlemen or members would, would, would appreciate that as well.
Are there any questions on that particular item? Okay. I'm sorry? Mr. Russo?
Yes. Well, what I'd like to do is give you an update on demand for CPAs and national services. The compilation, you know, the auditor, audits financial statements. You have a compilation, we have your financial statements. The difficulty that the people are facing right now, and I'm like, because mainly the focus is on auditing your tax, is to have the adequate support staff to find everything on a timely basis, and that's the problem that they're having. Individuals who are sole practitioners have a difficult time completing the work product. And typically, what happens, you'll have something in the fall, then you get tax season, and the other things get on the back burner because you don't have enough time. So, you know, I would consider that you, I've visited a number of firms over in Tulsa and the area. I would think that you would have a, would have some kind of recommendation from some other firms that actually have the support staff to come in on a timely basis and perform the service.
Appreciate those thoughts. Anything else on that particular item? If not, then discussion of the City of Tallahassee 2019-20 budget. This is Genge. Do you want to go ahead and address that at all?
It's a work in progress. It's not complete yet. My goal is to have everything, or at least a, a solid draft complete for your next meeting.
For the June?
Are we having a mid-month?
Well, yes, but we haven't actually had much of a chance to look at the budget, so I think probably the June would be a more reasonable goal.
Okay. That's doable.
And to that end, I do have a request of the councillors, if you wouldn't mind, so that we can address the need to repair city streets. If you could give us your top five street projects within your ward and prioritize those, then we can put some numbers to those and better ensure that our budget will be, with the constraints of time and money, be able to address as many of those as possible.
I think I'll find the best in this situation.
You have the smallest.
With the smallest words.
But I would like to ensure that we are addressing those most critical needs, and you, in your wards, have the best idea what those needs may be. And if you, as councillors, have other items that you want to consider within the budget, if you could get those to us, we will try to take those into consideration.
Do you want us to send that to you, Daniel?
That would be good. Anything else we need, Daniel?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 10, discussion and possible action to approve City of Tallahassee skate park reservation and operation policy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If I may, I would like to make a suggestion. We kind of patterned this agreement off of the pavilion closure to being on Morton Street. And I would like to suggest that we put the blocks, the six-hour blocks, in this skate park, skate park agreement, like we have at the pavilion, so someone could rent it for six hours for two hundred instead of anybody for six hundred. Go ahead, Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Boote's recommendation to mirror the pavilion block schedule.
I'd like to, I like the block schedule, but I think the two hundred, I, we're modeling after the pavilion, but I think that there is a better place that we can model this after. If you look at the Norris Park schedule, the Norris Park schedule shows that the pavilion, that's totally different than the two pavilions. The pavilion is six hundred dollars for the day or two hundred dollars for six hours. But if you look at the Norris Park schedule, and I think I sent this to you all, it, to actually rent Norris Park, the park, the playground, the gazebo, and the structure, it's only fifty dollars. So, we're modeling, we're not modeling it after a like park, we're modeling it after a pavilion.
If I can speak...
If we're looking at just the park, then we're looking at a fifty-dollar facility. And on top of that, I mean, this is the only park, Norris Park is the only park in Tallahassee that we have a fee to rent. I mean, we don't even have a fee to rent in Phelps Park, Ross Park, Sequoia Park, Antis Brandon Park. And so, I, I, I agree that the policy should be in place with the skate park, and I agree that we can have a fee schedule. I just think that the two hundred dollars is out of line with what should happen down there, and is out of line with what we're doing with our additional parks within the city.
If I can speak on that. At Norris Park, so the park itself is two hundred dollars, and the reason it's so low is, let's say you want to have a birthday party out there, as long as it's under twenty-five people, there's no charge. So, any citizen can go out there and utilize the different things. The two hundred dollars is there for, most of the time, when a nonprofit organization wants to rent Norris Park, like Walkham Island or Shoes and all those type events, it's two hundred bucks because they're going to rent the whole park. And that's why it's so low, is because it normally goes to the nonprofits. The other parks, people usually don't want to rent Sequoia. I mean, the nonprofits wouldn't want to be interested, so if a family member, a resident wants to go there, yeah, they can use it, and there's no charge, just like at Norris. Let's say you want to have a birthday party, go out and use it. And that's why it's so low.
Well, this agreement at Norris Park came about because we had such a demand. We actually had people there arguing in the beginning because they felt like they should be there and no one else should. And so, basically, we had come up with an agreement to reserve it.
The, the pavilion and the skate park are both, you know, high-traffic, specialized, you know, areas, and I think they need to be, I don't know, it, it needs to be handled a certain way because they're, they're high demand. they're, they're high demand.
Sure, and I agree with that. I think that's why we need, we have to put the policy in place. But from the Norris Park schedule, you're right, $200 for the entire facility, the park, the gazebo, the picnic and the shelter, but that's $200 all day. That's not $200 in six increments, or three increments. That's a $200 midnight to midnight reservation, 6:00 AM to midnight reservation.
Correct.
But the park area is only $50. And it's $50 from 6:00 to noon, $50 from 12:30 to 6:30, $50 from 7:00 to midnight. And I think that's where we're at with, I think that is more in line with the level of events or use that would happen at the skate park. I think we need the policies to govern, but then I think that that $50, the park area $50 fee, and we can do it in the block because I like the block, is more in line. And then if they want to rent it all day, it's $150, which would be more in line with what Norris Park, the actual renting of Norris Park is, rather than $200 in three, in six-hour increments versus all those $600 for all day. But it's still, it's the same rules because I went and like looked, except for you, you all did, you, it's the same rules for Norris Park, the reservation, except for on page 25 where you struck out. However, under no circumstances are all of those to be sold, which I get because, you know, there's not a place that you can put within $50 skate park. But I just don't think, I think the $200 in the blocking is too, too much, especially if we're comparing like park fees.
Can we repeat the motion if on the table because I forgot what, what was the? Charles, what were you saying? Well, could you do, do you mind repeating what you had, what you had requested?
I suggest that you put the blocks in a like location being $200 for every six-hour block, three blocks a day, $18.
So we have a motion and a second?
Is there further discussion?
So his is 200. I mean, I guess I could ask.
200 or 50?
It's 200 is what it says.
Yeah, a couple of $600 a day is what's been presented.
I mean, I guess I could ask to have a friendly amendment to your motion to rather than $200 every six hours, to make it $50 every six hours, to bring it more in line like the Norris Park. If I took to you.
If you'd like to speak, come to the podium.
My name is David. This is Wiley. He owns the skate shop downtown and we're usually the ones that are trying to do a skateboard event like this. And we just kind of wanted to bring light to the fact that we normally do them for free. We give away all the prizes for free. So the $50, I mean, that's a little more reasonable. We're still going to have to come up with it. But $200, I mean, it kind of, it puts us out a little bit and we're not making anything off of it, you know what I mean? Wiley's just trying to keep the business open. We love the skate park and we love using it and we love bringing everybody from out of town to come use it as well and they all love it too. But if, if the fee gets too high and we got to charge a high fee to skate, then nobody's going to do it because nobody wants to pay money and maybe lose. We like to see these kids progress and they have a great time. A lot of you guys have come to the events and they're fun, they're free and that's his block idea with $50 and that seems reasonable to us. And we would be the ones that would be trying to do it. I don't know of anybody else who's going to even try.
Yeah, we're the only two you guys have to do events on, really.
But we love the facility. I mean, we've worked well over a decade for it and we'd love to be able to do events and not be worried every time, you know what I mean? We're, we're trying to be in compliance as much as we can and this would really make an avenue for us to do that.
I'm definitely an advocate for the skate park, as you well know. I just think that, are you never going to have any professional competitions or?
In the future, definitely.
They pay entry fees and support like that.
Well, I mean, as far as that goes, I mean, we may get like, you know, big sponsors and, you know, like have a really big skilled event, but as far as it goes, the contests that we've thrown in the past, you know, it's like, we might have 30, 50 people come down there on a really good day. That's like a really good turnout. But I mean, profits-wise, I mean, I think I might have made maybe 50 bucks at tops and to throw one a $200 fee or $50 fee, I would barely be breaking even with just the 50, you know? So it's just like, it's for you too. I mean, he's been throwing events there too since the new ones because he doesn't for free. I can't really do one for free because I'll be out way too much money and I can't do that. I also would like to pull back a layer, but I mean, I mean, as then I was going to bring up. But when you're paying that $200 for the pavilion, you're also paying $200 for two bathrooms, for fountains, for things that are, for the anonymity's that are at the pavilion and that are at Norris Park. We don't have that at the skate park. We have potentially something that could be in the future, but right now we don't have it. So if they're going to do an event, we're not only are we going to now, we're going to require them to do the $50, but we're also going to require them to bring in the porter bodies and bring in the other things that aren't facilities that we have at the skate park. And so I just think we're comparing an apple to an orange and making everything, you know, the price of the pear. I mean, it's just not working. It just doesn't work in my mind.
I would like to say, these guys, I know they do a lot for our youth in the community. They set a great example. I'm very proud to know it. But also, it looks like the whole council agrees that it needs to be regulated. What it's come down to is the price. If you get 150 or 200 instead of 50, how long is that going to take to recoup your money that you've invested in it? Is it really about recuperating the money that's invested in it? If it is, you need to charge like 10,000.
Well, we need to pick other areas.
The point is, the difference in those fees between 50 and 200, the only thing it's going to do is obstruct these guys from working with a lot of youth in our community.
And I think you're absolutely right, Tom. And I think that goes back to, you know, if, if we're trying to recoup the fee, then I think we're looking at it a little, little backwards. I mean, if we're doing that, then let's put a quarter meter on the splash pad and let's do, you know, put a gate on Antis Brandon that they have to enter. You know, so I think that that's the wrong way to look and we shouldn't start that policy on the back of something that this community fought hard for, for decades to get.
I can, I can understand exactly what you're talking about. And I'd be willing to, I'm giving my second.
I think Ms. Weston has something to say.
I just want to say, I don't know these guys here, but I just want to say that I think we all need to realize that the purpose of our parks is for community involvement and active lifestyles. If we set a precedence where we're setting the fees, it's going to far outweigh the ability for people like this or the youth in our community to be able to use our parks to actually have an active lifestyle. And that's what we promote. We promote walkability, we promote activity, we promote health, we promote, you know, youth involvement. And I'm, my concern is, is that if we start setting a precedence for setting high fees, first of all, we're never really going to recoup our fees from what it costs to actually renovate that. But if we set the fee so high, it's going to inhibit anybody really wanting to organize activity that involves fiscal movement, so.
Thank you very much, Danielle.
Well, and I think, I think that, you know, it needs to be clear that we're not, not trying to recoup our money. I just think that, and, and we had a conversation earlier. I mean, I've talked to these guys about this plan. And so I think that really the differentiator is, are we going to have an event, right? Not, not these, you know, what you guys are talking about, what you're having your own competitions, the way that I understand it is, no different than Stephen and I going and having a kickball tournament in Norris Park for five bucks or whatever. So I, well, I think Ed and Grant, to my understanding, is if you're going to have a competition, if you're going to have, you know, you got to pay five bucks as you come over the bridge, you're going to have a stage setup, you're going to have a tent setup, you're going to have, you know, 200, 300 people there, not, you know, 20 guys down there on their skateboards, you know? I think that, I think that there's a little bit of difference from what Stephen is saying at 50 bucks, but, you know, I'll amend my motion to $100. I mean, I think that's fair for a six-hour block. You know, I'll amend my motion to $100 and I think that that's fair enough if you guys have got a real competition, 100 bucks. And then, you know, of course, we want it to be successful. We want an active lifestyle. I think that everybody wants that. But at the same time, like Grant has, you know, we went over with some of these other issues is, you know, we have to, when you get to a level of an event, you know, clearly the city has some liability there, but we also have to kind of set a scale of, you know, here's, here's the bar, what fair value.
There are a certain number of participants that defines an event.
Well, I think, I think what, I think the issue was if, I think that the issue is if they're charging for it, right? I mean, that's the difference is if, if you're coming over the bridge to the skate park to watch a competition and there's somebody there collecting five bucks at the gate, or you're having a concert down there in, you know, in combination with a skating event and you've got a, I don't know, a skater van, then you're charging 10 bucks and you're charging 10 bucks at the gate. I would think that when they start to charge for attendance, I think that's, and I'm not, you know, I'm not an attorney, but is that accurate, Grant?
Yeah, clearly they can't charge for city property to the exclusion of others that just want to walk on without some type of policy in place. This policy is drafted that y'all are looking at, though, does, I would draw your attention to paragraph two. It specifically says, "All events anticipated having more than 25 attendants, attendees are required to submit an application." So by approving this, you would say that anybody that uses it over 25, that has anticipated, you know, numbers over 25 needs to come to the city and request this application.
Well, and I would just say.
But it does say events.
Right. And I agree with my friend and new counselor here in Ward Four. I think the difference between, the only difference that I see in your analogy is, if we have our kickball tournament in Norris Park and they, there, it's only $50 for us to do it, but if they have it in the same kickball tournament at the skate park or a skating tournament, whatever they want, it's $200 for them to do it or $100 with your amended, your amended motion. So all I believe should happen is, let's, let's keep it the same. Let's, it's a $50 reservation for the park of Norris Park. It's a $50 reservation for the park at the skate park. If, you know, if they want to rent the pavilion, which then again comes with bathrooms and a nice slab that they can set the stage on and a band and all of that fun stuff, then it becomes a $200 reservation. But we don't have that infrastructure in place at the skate park. Now, if we want to put it in the budget and get that infrastructure in place at the skate park, that's a different conversation. I'm willing to have and I'm willing to up the fee, but at this point it's not there. And so I'm going to stick.
I have a question. Does the city have intention of trying to join forces with us and make such an event that would, you know, warrant a $100 to $200 fee? Because in the past, we've kind of been along on this.
Well, have you talked to the Convention of Visitors Bureau? I mean, have you been down to see if that's something? I mean, it seems like that would be more of an angle for them to bring people from out of town because you guys have got a pretty good, you guys have got a pretty good solid base of skaters, clearly. But to bring, I think to bring people from the outside in with such an event, I would think that that would be a better avenue for marketing or whatever as opposed to, you know, as opposed to asking anybody on this body to do it. You know, you know, are you familiar with me down at the chamber?
I'm not familiar with it. I thought Jamie Hale said that you came and spoke, visited with her at the Talacaw Major Association because I know Jamie had expressed an interest into helping you guys. And I know, of course, Tor Talacaw in the chamber also has funds and resources staff who are very skilled and knowledgeable in that area. And that is right at their, that's what they're here for.
Yeah, mainly it was, I talked to her just to get like, you know, funding for the $600 or $200 or $100, $50 that you guys were charging me, but just so I can break even. Because every time we throw in a contest, it costs us a lot of money. And to add a fee onto that is just going to make it even harder and especially with the cash part. Basically what I'm trying to say is, is we only charge the people that are competing in the event. We don't charge spectators. We, you know, we don't give that. And pretty much it's like, like I said, it's just really hard to break even already. So just adding on a bigger amount of money, a fee, it's just like that.
Wiley, there's, there's no, there's no way we can recoup what we've invested. We've invested a lot in you guys.
Yeah, I know.
Leaving it up to you.
Thank you.
And we're trying to get, we're trying to help you get some things started.
Yes.
We, we put a significant investment in Norris Park and the pavilion out there. And I just think we need to set this, you know, at a, at a level that, that you would more appreciate.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want to hinder that, but I still think we need to have this policy and have a certain note.
Well, I think as we grow the, 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 the anonymity's at the skate park, we can grow the fee schedule just like we did with Norris Park. I mean, up until last year, a year before, in Norris Park, there wasn't a $200 every six-hour pavilion.
And if my contests start taking off and I'm, you know, making a ton of money, I'll be like, hey, guys, I'll give you 500 this time. But, you know, just to get it started though. Yeah, like if we start really getting this ball rolling, then by all means, I mean, we can change the funding, but.
Right. And I guess it's where Counselor Combs, I mean, I, I agree with you 100%. But I think what, and then I'll be quiet because I know that I've talked a lot about this. But I think we're taking the Norris Park policy that has grown over years and as we've added things to it and we're starting the skate park out at that level. We're not, we're not going to the beginning of where Norris Park started, where our, where our park was and how it began, and allowing the fee schedule to grow as the skate park grows. And that's where, what I really think should happen. And that's why I'm back to the $50. I really think it should be there.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just say this. Before I came, before I came on this council, it was the farmer's market and the irregularities with the farmer's market. And then we get to the Norris Park discussion, then we talk about the pavilion, and we haven't talked about the swimming pool and we haven't talked. So I think that there needs to be, I think that as a whole, over the next four years, I'd like to see some consistency with what it is that we're going to do, just lay out some consistency. So I'll, I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion from $200 down to $50 moving forward. I think that we really need to get some regularities in place.
And to that end, I would like to see us stop nickel and diming our citizens and, you know, we need to charge for facilities, but we are just, there are a lot of small fees that we are assessing.
And it's, and it's for you guys to use. I mean, absolutely. That's, I mean, that's what the whole thing is there for. But at the same time, Tony Hawk comes to town, you pack the place with 20,000 people all up in the hills and when you bring them down.
I would also like to point out that, you know, we, we tend to keep the park clean. We sweep the blocks every time it floods. We pick up the trash, you know? We painted it in the past. We, we take a lot of pride in it.
Mr. Combs, are you willing to accept the amendment?
I would amend mine to the $100. I won't bend it to the $50.
Okay, so let's, if there's no further discussion.
Unless you withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion completely.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the skate park reservation operating policy as is, with the exception of the deposit fee schedule, to change the skate park per day rate to $50 per six-hour block.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Counselor Ratliff has seconded the motion. Is there further discussion? If not, then we have a roll call.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Lo?
No.
Counselor Combs?
Unfortunately, I'm out of the floor.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Mayor?
I'm going to vote yes.
Motion carried.
I would just like to say, consistency is what we're striving for. When they bring Tony Hawk and 10,000 people into town, let's consider paying them $50,000 the way we do Redfern.
Thank you so much.
I think you made mainstream.
Okay, moving on to item number eleven. Discussion and possible action to renew the interlocal agreement on the handling of juvenile cases between the District Court, fifteenth Judicial District, and the City of Talalakaw effective through June thirty, twenty twenty. Uh, City Attorney, Lieutenant Lloyd.
This is a bit of housekeeping. The city typically checks over somebody's, over local petty crime of that nature, and it was a system. We've had an interlocal agreement like this in place for quite some time, at least a lot of it in City Attorney. So, uh, before you, same agreement we had last year, just re-upping for a new year. Any questions?
You're okay with it? I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Ratliff. Can we have roll call?
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number twelve. Discussion and possible action to purchase six three-yard dumpsters, six, six-yard dumpsters for twelve-yard dumpsters. By, uh, Sol Voice Superintendent Chris Thompson.
Hello. Um, uh, just a while ago, I submitted the invoice for ENEO Fab. Uh, the reason we go with ENEO Fab is because the rails on the bottom of those dumpsters fit our trucks. Um, we have yellow dumpsters, we have dumpsters that have lids that need to be replaced, and uh, they cost too much to repair, so we just buy the new ones and set them out, and make Talalakaw look a little better, and get the gray and the yellow dumpster done, so...
Are the old ones, do they go out surplus, or what do we do with them?
Uh, usually, we just...
They go with the trash.
Yeah. Uh, usually, we'll, uh, cut them up and send them over to Robbins Recycle, or A and B, or Agency Recycle.
Okay.
Well, sometimes, like, if they're in all right shape, we'll help out the, uh, accounting, uh, with dumpsters for their facility right there. Uh, but now, that's all we do.
Is there further discussion? Questions? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hires, seconded by Counselor Combs. Thank you. I was stuck on there, or I couldn't get to the Combs.
Either way.
Can you just clarify for me real quick, Chris, why we only have one quote in our packet?
Uh, because whenever I got the quote from, uh, American Dumpster in Durant, they run off a different width on the rails, so it won't be able to get on my truck.
Hey, that's a good reason to not buy them.
And these are also, uh, budgeted items as well.
Awesome, thank you, Chris.
If we can roll call?
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes, I'm sorry, can I ask a question to Grant real quick?
Motion carried.
On that item, or...
Yes, I'm sorry. Did that motion include the total purchase amount? Did I miss it?
It was not mentioned as part of the motion.
Does the motion need to be modified to include the total purchase amount?
Right, yeah, at this point, it was in the move. It would have been probably better, but it's okay, it's been approved first.
Okay, we're not gonna die.
Well, he sent the bid from ENEO Fab.
With the dollar amounts in it.
Okay, okay, all right.
Did I do something wrong?
No, you're right. You're right.
All right, zoom me out.
Sorry. He sent the bid that you received this afternoon, ENEO...
Well, I, I received it Friday night, and I had to put it in the packet. There's the same one, I'm gonna talk about it on the phone.
Okay.
The, the motion carried.
That's twenty-seven, too.
Well, I got the next one, too.
Okay.
That one hurts a little more.
Uh, discussion and possible action to reallocate a hundred and eighty thousand from one-one-five dash six-five dash eighty-seven hundred to the one-one-five dash six-five dash seventy-four hundred maintenance contracts for refuse disposal fee.
And I sent out an email on that, um, last week, as to the status, on that, where the money was going. And just so everybody knows, um, if we don't use all of it, it is gonna go back into, you know, we're not gonna just leave it there.
Before anybody makes a motion, do we need to modify? I think we sent out a...
The yellow number?
Right, so what were the correct, what were the correct account numbers on that?
It's six-five instead of six-seven, so it's one-one-five dash six-five, seventy-four hundred.
Eighty-four hundred and seventy-four hundred.
I'm, I have a question. So, I'm okay with doing this, but I think it's because we have to do it out of necessity. But is there any type of contract, or can we have a contract? Because I got the ones you sent, but outside of that, a, a contract with the, the landfill that...
Man, I wish everybody was that easy when I talk to them.
Okay, um...
Not sure exactly what happened there. Is there pro or discussion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Ratliff. Is there discussion? If not, can we have roll call?
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number fourteen. Discussion and possible action to change workers' compensation carrier.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. Um, and, you know, I guess it's kind of really all started almost by accident a little bit. Actually, our Finance Director has been in Communications a lot with OMAC, who's our current provider for our different coverages that we have through the city general liability, automobile, the property coverage, and they wanted to quote our workers' comp last year when we renewed those other coverages. And so when that renewal came about, uh, OMAC reached out to us and did provide a quote, um, a little bit of history, um, and you may have seen this, um, the current coverage that we have through CompSource has been in place, so it's not keeping the status, um, and it's actually kind of been on an auto renewal, so it really has not been looked at. Um, the current quote, that was part of your packet with, uh, CompSource, is twenty, two-hundred and seventy-nine, six-twenty, and the OMAC quote is, uh, two-sixty-two, ten. Um, CompSource is the underwriter for OMAC, so essentially, they are, uh, one of the same. Um, we, um, you know, I, 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 do you guys have any questions on that? I put both of those quotes in your packet as lo- as well as a short-term prorated quote for just two months, because everything with OMAC, who, we all know who OMAC is, they provide, um, most coverages for municipalities, um, as well as CompSource is the underwriter, so...
So...
And there's a total savings, and I think that's, you know, and it's not a matter of savings at service, I don't, I don't see any, really any interruption, um, in, in the process, and there's savings of seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Billing on that will still be quarterly. Um, one of the things that will actually be less for the Finance Department is that they will not have to, um, do quarterly payroll reports, um, with OMAC. The, 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 the audit is done on the previous year, so it's not even on, you know, current, so...
So we talked, I think, or so we go, about this, and we had an auto renewal, is that what it is?
We are in grace period right now.
Okay.
Which, um, so if, if we do not have a decision here tonight, we will have to default with CompSource and not take advantage of that savings.
One question. I do know that we have coverage for our attorneys. Our attorneys are, um, not employees?
Our attorneys are not employees, per se. Um, I believe the, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, as, in the, um, we have an attorney in our municipal court who is, um, on city payroll.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a carryover mistake, I think. Because if you look at the, the payroll, it's not considered.
Is there pro or discussion? Is there a motion?
And OMAC is the lower?
Yes. We actually...
I'll make that, I'll make that motion. So go ahead and go with OMAC, but, about now.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Combs and Counselor Ratliff?
So, on point of order, so are we mixing the attorney line?
As presented, as the attorney did, but what I'm saying is, I don't believe that that is for the city judge.
Because the payroll there is reflecting fifteen thousand, six-oh-eight.
And that is actually, um, and that could be, I think, clarification on that, again, if we don't have a decision tonight, we will automatically default. That could be the courts, because the, um, our deputy, um, our court clerk and our deputy court clerk, um, are under the courts, and that may be just the classification there, um, because of the code for the workers' comp.
And even if...
And looking at the amount of it, it's pretty small compared to all the others, so...
Sixty-nine dollars.
Exactly.
And even if we are talking about two months with OMAC before the renewal, July one, for the next annual, correct?
Um, well, the, the, the coverage with CompSource has been, um, a main renewal. I mean, it's just been that way since nineteen eighty-seven. So with OMAC, there's, will be a two-month, because with OMAC, all of their policies have a common expiration date, and it usually falls within the fiscal year with municipalities. So that is what that two-month prorated premium is for.
Well, my point is, if any changes need to be made between now and when that common expiration date is, we can, you know, we'll be able to...
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So we're still talking about sixty-nine dollars divided by twelve, you know, so I think that this is...
No, and I think what you may be looking at there is, because I'm actually, yeah, on that short, short-term policy there. I would guess, um, because I don't, this quote does have the classification codes, and I believe that is for the courts. Because just, like, you had the numbers and knowing what the salary is of those employees over there. And that's the same thing as well in the, um, with CompSource, so, again, I agree with Grant on that. I believe that's just for those employees in the court. They're classified that way on our table, they're part of the managerial group, but they are part of court.
Are there further questions or discussion? If not, we have a motion. Can we have a roll call?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number fifteen. Discussion and possible action to hire a deputy court clerk in the managerial department.
Yes, back in our non-court area. Um, the, uh, actually, this is, uh, we had our, um, deputy court clerk, took a big go-box and did not return. Um, as part of the management team here, we have an employee that we hired as a cashier, but is actually working, um, on a criminal justice masters, and had an interest in covering that area for us while that, that person was out, and she applied for that position. We had no other qualified candidates for that position that were interested in the position and the pay for that position is at. Um, so we'd like to recommend that Gina Champlin, um, for that position, um, she is currently in at a T-one-eleven step three, and she would go to a T-one-twelve step two.
So Gina, can you spell that? Oh, thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Hires and Counselor Long have made a motion and have seconded it. Can we have roll call, please?
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number sixteen. Discussion and possible action to promote labor operator to foreman in the street department.
Yes, in our street department, we've had, um, some opportunities to promote from events, um, and this is another one of those opportunities. Um, the, the hiring committee is recommending Gary Thompson, who, um, actually is with us here today, uh, but Gary has been, um, employed with the City of Talalakaw for thirteen years. He has a Class B CPO, um, and we'd like to promote him into that position. He is currently at a T-one, one-twelve, and is kind of in between steps because of, he didn't do a full step. Um, and so he's in between a step five and a six. Um, and the recommendation is to put him at a T-one-fourteen, step five.
Some move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second by Counselor Hires and Long. Can we have roll call?
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, Mr. Thompson. Item number seventeen. Discussion and possible action to hire a dispatcher in the police department.
Um, this, uh, the recommendation from the hiring committee, um, and, uh, is to hire a Taylor Bailey for a dispatcher in the police department, at a T-one-twelve, step one.
That's just Taylor Bailey.
Taylor Bailey. Did I say Bailey, Taylor?
Yeah.
Bailey.
What, what is it?
Taylor.
Taylor Bailey.
Bailey.
I think you just did a tongue twister.
Well, I have another Bailey that works out there, they're gonna be confused.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Counselor Combs and Long?
Did we say that we were hiring Taylor at?
At a T-one-twelve, step one.
Any further questions, Mr. Thompson? If not, roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number eighteen. Discussion and possible action to accept the self-demotion of encumbrance clerk in the managerial department.
And, um, this is for our, recently, we hired an encumbrance clerk. Um, that position, um, just, I don't think was well-suited, and there was a position open in the cashier since Gina went to the court, so, um, the position there was a really inappropriate change. She hired in at a T-one-twelve, step one, as the encumbrance clerk, and it would be going to a cashier at a T-one-eleven, step two.
I'm sorry, what was her name?
Krista Flynn.
Krista Flynn.
Flynn.
Oh, right, it's Krista Flynn, okay. Musical chairs, right?
And what was she, Malia, she was a D?
The encumbrance clerk.
No, two, uh, she was a T.
Oh, a T-one-twelve, step one.
To a T-one-eleven, step two.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Counselor Hires and Long? Is there discussion? I'm hearing any, can we have roll call?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Item number nineteen. Discussion and possible action related to a memorandum of understanding between Cherokee Nation Entertainment LLC and the City of Talalakaw, and corresponding acknowledgement of duty related to additional law enforcement, fire, and emergency services. Do you want to strike a card?
Sure. So you have in your, before you today, a proposed memorandum of understanding and acknowledgement that's referenced herein. It has a thirty-day determination out for either party. So even though it's an annual refer, just so you know, at any time the relationship's not working, there's thirty days out. And I understand that Cherokee Nation Entertainment is agreeable in those terms. Just so you know, it's been administered back and forth to Cherokee Nation Entertainment. I'll give you that document that's in front of you.
So my, my very first question is at the very beginning, and it, the term of this agreement shall continue, shall be from the effective date through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Should we put that on offer? That's on calendar system here. Do we need to put that on our, this one year?
It's a thirty, thirty day out, so it's, that's up to you.
I mean, I guess we're not, so the little reason I ask is because I know that you can't do things this year for next year. You know, that's why everything is a year contract that it runs. And so I guess we're not technically buying anything from them or spending any money, we're seeing that. It just seems like we'll have one contract that's in December. But if that's fine, if you're fine with that, then I'm fine with that.
Well, from a financial standpoint, it does eliminate the need to make it accrual at the end. Actually, it's like fiscal year, but it's pushed to calendar year.
And I just don't know, because the Cherokee Nation also, well, it doesn't even run with their fiscal year, but of course, again, he might have a calendar fiscal year there, but it's not, not a- As you can tell, it's payable in quarterly portions, so if quarter that accrues.
And so I guess being on the calendar fiscal year, that we still get the same quarters. It was like the termination, then we get a quarter, but it's true.
John, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I had one, one question here. It probably pleased you, Nate King, to address it. Because it says law enforcement, what obviously you told the nation was cross-deputization, is that reflected in this agreement? So we go to go on sovereign land and do that, he better know how to address it than I do because it's in trust, it's Native American land. And if we do provide services, you know, whatever it is, we have permission to do that. Is that?
It is a separate agreement. We had a, we've had an existing cross-deputization agreement with the Department of Service for sixteen years.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm curious, how much would it cost you guys to do this? How many more calls are you going to have? I mean, you can't predict a fire, you know, so, but you can do it and talk.
An answer to that is I don't know. The numbers they're giving us are pretty low. The thing I have to consider though are the collateral calls, actually going on the casino property. I don't think it's going to be very many for us, but we're going to see, what I anticipate are more wrecks, more traffic stops, more burglaries, more shoplifting in that general area of town. And it's also going to put another power man, thousands of cars on South Muskogee that already can't handle the day-to-day traffic that we have at certain times of the day. So only time will tell. We're taking a look at that every week on our stats, starting this week, on our crime data too. So each week we'll have more data to come back with to know, so.
So we can, we can look at that data and we can review this annually?
Well, you can do it every thirty days, but you give a notice before, and that's why, in terms of our negotiation. But we want, if I may, I mean, we spoke with the department heads, we talked about this that late. The office would give a window to see how the operational side actually turned out and then perhaps renegotiate if needed to.
As per your question, my department, Chief King said it'd be hard to tell, but I would guess very, very little extra is what it's going to cost us other than time. You know, our guys are going to be there if they're needed as well as his. What we're going to do is we'll be a little more time with doing inspections and medical assist. Fire probability is low there because of their systems, but we do annual inspections along with, like I said, medical assist. But regardless, they're entitled to the service.
I agree there. Forty-five thousand though, that split between.
The, the original, I think, was fifteen thousand, but between two of us, I don't know if Chief King's talked to them or not. I've visited just a little bit with them, but that's going to be up to the council to decide what the hell they want to do there.
So to my understanding, just a couple of questions, if, I mean, Casino's open now. And if there was a fire out there, or if there was a fight out there, what does it change for you guys without this memorandum? For us, nothing. I mean, and it's something we discussed. Ultimately, if someone calls us with an emergency, whether it's the Cherokee Casino or whether it's Hoover Police Department or whoever, somebody calls us and says, "We need help, get here now," we've got to go. And we're going to go statutorily and just morally and ethically, we're going to be there.
And isn't there a, you know, Dr. Uso talked about this Indian trust land, there's a line, the fine line, what's this side, the city limits and that side is not, but it doesn't matter, you guys are still going to go show up.
It's within our-
So this, I mean, you know, so this is essentially, this is not, this is not a proposition from us to the Cherokee Nation saying, "Hey, we're going to help you provide services if you'll give us, you know, eleven thousand, some odd, and some change a quarter." This is them saying, you know, we'll give this to you in exchange.
There has been a little back and forth, but it has also been, it's been an amicable conversation, one of those things. They know, I mean, I've talked to the security side quite a bit. And I've told the guys, "I appreciate anything you give, we'll be there if you need us." And, you know, ultimately, nothing against Ray, but theoretically, hypothetically, probably practically, the department that's going to deal with casino issues on a daily basis is probably going to be the police department on a day-in, day-out basis, whether it's on the casino floor, whether it's at Walmart picking up a shoplifter or working a wreck in front of Casey's, that's going to be us, but it's what we do every day anyway. It's what we get paid to do.
And this is, this is just kind of a little bonus, I guess.
In my conversation with the chief and Mr. Childress and their attorney, it was, it was, this is a partnership, a good steward, a good neighbor to the, to the City of Talalcoa. They know that they're putting a lot of weight on us. They don't owe us anything, but they're willing to try and assist and help as they do other communities that they put this extra weight on. So that's, that's what this is about. I would love for them to fund the, the whole department. You know, beggars get what's easy and when they're, when not really asking, they're difficult.
I'd like to see them hire, you know, another police officer, another firefighter, another EMT, you know, there's.
I'm with you, on your side.
I know, I know that, that they, they charge other cities different amounts.
In, because it's in the county, if we get a run, we have the capability of charging them for that run. This being that they pay us will well outweigh in my estimate of what we would charge them.
Is there further discussion?
I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to, to, to accept the memorandum of understanding between Cherokee Nation and the City of Talalcoa.
Is there a second? I'll second. Does that motion clarify Cherokee Nation Entertainment, Grant, or just Cherokee Nation?
I thought, you said entertainment, did you?
Okay, sorry.
That's right.
I'll second your motion, Council Ratliff. So, with the, Council Ratliff, second, Council Long, do we have a roll call? Council Long?
Yes.
Council Holmes?
Only because of the price difference, I love the memorandum and the agreement that we have on the moment.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number twenty. It's just you, Ed. Discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-three dash twenty nineteen, amending Part Six, Licensing and Business Regulations Chapter Four, Residential Sales of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talalcoa.
Thank you, Mayor. In light to some continuing discussions I've had with Council Hires, I think we need to have more conversations about this ordinance. And so my recommendation would be to table it tonight.
I make a motion that we table. Is there a second?
Till, till when?
Mid-month. What, automatically, does the table automatically need mid-month or the next meeting?
If you specify, it's the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll sign it.
Motion and a second. Is there a discussion? If not, do we have a roll call? Council Holmes?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Ratliff?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We previously covered item number twenty-one, so skipping to the number twenty-two. This is also a discussion only item. Today's the public hearing. Discussion to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-five dash twenty nineteen, vacating or closing part of the street right of Way for Ozark Avenue. A tract of land lying in a portion of Ozark Avenue, City of Talalcoa, Oklahoma, more particularly described as follows to wit. Do I need to read this? Because I can if you'd like. The legal description?
No, you can, I'll see here.
Get in your first name, I think.
You can say a broader description, like northwest corner of Lot One, Block one oh three, El Segundo.
Say as described in the-
As described in the agenda, that would be great, thank you.
So, I don't know, most of you can recall that last year we leased a parcel of property on Lee Avenue to Ty Wilson, who is with the Cherokees for Black History Preservation. And after- So, after Mr. Wilson performed his due diligence on the community center that he's going to build on the property that we leased him, he determined that they weren't going to meet setback distances for the proposed building. And so it just so happened that the property that we leased him was adjacent to Road Right-ofway for Ozark Avenue, which was a platted street from way back when that the City of Talalcoa never constructed. And so, it's helping us get through all the cross-sell stuff and the self-division. There we go. You can see it. It's a Lot One, is that Block one oh three, I believe? This is the property that we leased Mr. Wilson. And the darker outline is the proposed vacation. We're not vacating the entire Road Ri- Right-ofway for Ozark Avenue. In fact, Mr. Wilson may not even build into the vacated portions, but he wasn't going to be able to meet the setback distances. So, this is a first reading. We've, we've done this a couple of times and I'll remind you that it's not finished even if we pass the ordinance. I don't know exactly how this would work out. I don't know if Mr. Wilson would sue us to permanently vacate this easement. That'd be a weird circumstance, but in, statutorily, if you guys pass this ordinance and the community center falls through, it doesn't happen, then we still have the right, if we were never sued in district court, to come back and reopen the Rock Road Right-ofway.
Do you ever anticipate that we would use that Road Right-ofway for a trail?
I, I could see it being used for something like a trail and, you know, that would coincide nicely with the feature that Mr. Wilson's proposing with the community center, having the trail. It's something Mr. Wilson and I have talked about as a community, a playground near the community building as well as accessibility through sidewalks and trail system which don't exist in that area. So, yeah, absolutely. I think it would be an ideal location for something like that.
Is it close to the Old Depot?
It is very close to the Old Depot. The property owner to the west, northwest is Bob Ed Colford Jr., who owns the property where the Old Depot was.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ozark Street Avenue correlates to Morris?
I believe-
Or is the swing, you know, for the curvature in that road?
Yeah, and it starts at Chocktaw. Again, it is discussion only, so if you guys have any questions, happy to answer any of them.
So the disadvantages, the disadvantages of doing away with this would just be for anything we decided to do in the future, but you're saying that we could potentially get some, or most, or all of that back depending on?
Well, so it's always going to be our property. The City of Talalcoa owns the property no matter what. We would, you know, if, if we were sued in district, district court and we didn't contest it and district court permanently closed the Road Right-ofway, then we couldn't go through there and build the road if we wanted to in the future, until we went ahead and re-adopted Road Right-ofway there. But hopefully there wouldn't be a building or a park or a sidewalk or a trail there, so. So I can't see us doing that. It's been, I think, seventy years since this, since we could have built Ozark and we didn't, so. Yes, sir.
Did we ever consider, I guess it's not on anyway, but did we consider a special exception to the setback department for that building?
No. He, he wanted more space and it was obvious based on his initial layout that he was going to need more space. It's a funky triangle and so we were trying to square it up the best we could.
So, just to be clear though, in the spacious, you build on to the Right-ofway?
Some features, not necessarily the structure. And if we receive plans from Mr. Wilson and it proposes a structure, I can bring it back to this body. And we can decide what we want to do.
Are there further questions, further discussion?
Can we get a copy of his layout?
Absolutely.
If there is nothing else, we will move on to item number twenty-three, discussion of possible action to approve the carnival and amusement ride application submitted by Sam's Amusement and Carnival Incorporated for an event scheduled for May eighth through May twelfth to be located at twenty-four fifty South Muskogee Avenue.
So, what I'm giving you is all the information provided by the applicant.
But we're setting up, right?
Well, this is, last year was the first time that we actually did a permit form in the past. I believe it was more or less handled. Mr. Phelps came to the council, said, "I want to have a carnival, it's going to the Boy Scouts." And we said, "Okay, have fun." They moved their location and I think everybody noticed it next to Walmart and the UKV's property. And my understanding is they had success there. They liked that location. And my understanding is the residents of Talalcoa enjoyed it at that location for the lack of chiggers, if nothing else. So they're going to continue to go there as long as the UKV allows it. And we still don't have this process of applying for a carnival or amusement rides nailed down because we think about it about May of every year and that's the only time we really think about it. because we think about it about May of every year, and that's the only time we really think about it. But they did, they were able, it was last second, but they were able to meet all the required submissions of the code. It might not have been in a completely timely fashion, but we do have all the information. I met the owners today. Apparently, they actually travel with the carnival from city to city. You can see where their last four locations were, Owasso, Okema, Apache, and Puerto Rico. If you guys know what it is, I'm sure most of you attended it with your kids. No, Stephen? Yeah, you don't do that, huh?
I barely do the, the rides, the carnival there, I go everywhere.
I don't blame you for not doing the rides.
Although it is right next in my, I had to try by.
In, in years past, when Sam called in with the, they'd come sit down, the fire department's always been able to do a walk-through inspection, make sure everything was, you know, safe to our, our, you know, what we could see. And we're certainly not riot inspectors, but we've been, been a lot of safety inspection. Went through two, two of us that somehow kind of got lost in, it was sovereign land, or not sovereign land, but trust land, when they first went out there. I think from what I'm reading, what I understand about it now is the fourteen or fifteen days notice getting to us, we still have to go down there. Spoke with Clint earlier. You guys exempt the timeframe, allow them to do that, we'll make sure they get inspected in a timely fashion, so they can move forward with the carnival.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And the building inspector will, will do a review as well.
I'll also need a copy of the application, the basic information, so I can follow up on the question.
Is there further discussion or a motion?
I would say that prior motion needs to be waived for this particular application. Just to clarify, though, just to be clear, it is late to that.
When we discuss this next time, like six months from now, year and a quarter, but I'd like to see that liability insurance a little bit higher.
Um, there are a number of things that we need to revisit on this ordinance. The fee alone is, we haven't been able to determine a hard fee on it. The code alludes, we talked about it last year, the code alludes to if an application is denied, then a hundred dollars of the fee will be maintained by the city, and all other fees will be refunded. It doesn't say what the fee is in the code. Clark Ramens hasn't identified a resolution or a fee policy that was adopted in the past for that purpose, so that is something that we need to revisit, is the fee for this. And at that same time, it would be appropriate to the liability insurance. And as you do notice on there, we are one of the named insured on there as well.
Is that Trevor's?
What's that?
Scrivener's here.
And, and on that note, and the Fire Marshal office and the Fire Department, I was gonna have to work with Mr. Clint, you know, Mr. Clint Johnson on this, and because we're revamping our fee schedule as well, so there does need to be a permit issued, and we need to create one of those to make sure that it's just documented properly, if you're...
Do we collect some sort of tax off of their sales? Do we collect a tax, the city's sales tax off of their sales?
I couldn't imagine that.
Supposed to, yes.
Yes, you kind of like the Red Firm vendors.
Are you Larry?
Larry.
Hey, Larry, I heard Larry was coming.
I'm with the carnivals, so. If you got any questions, I, I didn't hear what you were asking.
My question is just, a city sales tax, do you guys contribute to the city sales tax based on...
That, that if you're in Jody, and I'm sure that they take taxes all over the state, every city, you know, it's different.
I'm just saying, I know that there's, just recently, we had Red Firm, which is a festival downtown. All the individual vendors receive a, you know, a tax form, then they're obligated to fill out based upon sales and...
They're, they're stationed right here in Oklahoma, they're right about Shawnee. Been coming here probably twenty, twenty-five years. And that's because Bryce isn't involved anymore, so that's how we run into this.
Now you're gonna deal with us.
Yeah, yeah, a little snag, we're here, set out, and we just found out today that we didn't have a permit. And I think they sent it in earlier and it got left on a desk or something, so.
Well, it was incomplete.
Yeah.
But Jody showed up today with all the info, and we met, so.
Hey, you got the insurance, I read, and they brought you all that stuff, right? Any other questions?
Do you have funnel cakes?
Yes, we have funnel cakes. We have funnel cakes, we got like twenty-five different flavors.
And fresh corn doughs.
And lots of sandwiches.
Dr. Uson?
I just have one question, just from a procedure point of view. The two was remodeling that building, right? If you go into Walmart, and it seems that accommodations you visit with these people, that what stage you are in construction, does anybody bring any stuff in and out? I don't know if you've noticed they're remodeling that building there, that little strip building. Is anyone aware of that? Yeah, yeah, so, you know, that's the only thing I ask you to consider, to, you know, since they do have the property there, the process of remodeling, that's what I've observed, that it's an accommodation you visit with these people, you know, and let them know what, what your intentions are. You know, find that their intentions regarding construction, you know, whether it be, you know, adverse, if they're gonna be doing anything, or maybe they could have baited during this particular period of time.
It's only four days, Mr. Uson.
Yeah.
Four days. May the eighth through May the twelfth, four days.
Well, I know, all I know is the construction is in process now.
Well, they have a contract with the Catoas.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they told us that they have a contract with them.
We blocked it off with trucks, so they couldn't...
They're remodeling the front part, that I observed, I don't know about degressing or aggression.
This is moving off of the judicial...
Yes, okay, so we need to move on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the carnival and amusement ride application submitted by Sam's Amusement and Carnivals, Inc., waiving the fifteen-day application date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we have a roll call.
Council Hires? Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Redlin?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number twenty-four, because it's regular session. Is there a motion to accept regular session?
I'll make that motion.
And a motion and a second?
Council Redlin?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs? Council Hires?
Yes.
I will bring us back into session. Item number twenty-five, discussion on possible action to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty contract with FOP Lodge Two oh one. Does anyone desire?
Motion to table?
No action.
Oh, yeah, motion. I withdraw, I withdraw my motion to the tables.
Hearing none. Then item number twenty-six, discussion on possible action related to City of Talapaw versus Spring Water Properties LLC at all, Cherokee County, case number CB twenty eighteen forty-three. Anyone desire to take action? Hearing none. Discussion of the mid-month special meeting. If we're desirous of a mid-month special meeting, that would be?
May twentieth.
Do we need one?
I have a feeling we'll need one.
We tabled something that I'd be on the mid-month.
Okay, there you have it.
That was just tabled in that, or...
Yeah, that was just taken to the next meeting.
On the next meeting.
I said when, and Marie said mid-month.
All right. Damn it.
Okay. So we will schedule mid-month meeting for May twentieth? Okay. And then we are at adjournment?
Summit.
Second.
Could we have a roll call?
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Redlin?
Yes.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.